Welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, February the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty-eight subsection three point three of the municipal act and section sixteen point six point two four of the city of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and the recording of this meeting will also be posted on the city's website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings, and minutes page of the city's website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of the webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. And with that, I would ask all of the councillors to turn on their webcams. Welcome, everyone. And I think before we begin with the agenda, just a little clarification, there's been a lot of discussion in the community lately about tiny homes. And recently County Council approved funding and is looking for tenders for a proposal on Parkinson Road on an existing site with county housing. And for clarification, I think maybe some of the wording that's been used has caused a little bit of angst with some of the neighbors. And we do not know what the final plan looks like at this point, but so far with the communication we received, it looks like we're requesting for a single building with eight units that could be anywhere in size from three hundred and twenty to four hundred square feet. Much like Indwell, and I guess you could consider the site at Van Sitterdav that Indwell has, you could consider those tiny homes. But it's different than what some people have seen in the press and other communities with sea containers and sheds or whatnot. So it's not quite the the same type of proposal, but the community will learn more about it as the process moves along. And let's see, so we've got a lot on the agenda today and we'll start with any disclosure of conflict of interest. Councillor Acioli?
Thank you, your worship. I do declare a potential culinary interest in closed session with respect to agenda item four-two, industrial land update.
Thank you. Any other disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none, disclosures of new business? Matters arising from the minutes? Then we'll go for the minutes from our regular meeting, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Lauder, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on February fourth, two thousand and twenty-one be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries? And we have no additions to the agenda, no presentations, so we'll get right on to delegations and we have Frank Gross from the County of Oxford regarding speed management on Oxford Road seventeen and Oxford Road thirty. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Birch. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Thank you. I'm also joined, joined with or by David Simpson, Director of Public Works, and Sean Van Acker, Transportation Supervisor with the county as well. I will share my screen. And you're seeing the presentation, okay? Thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to present our findings and recommendations of the speed and road safety review we completed on Oxford Road seventeen and Oxford Road thirty, just at the north and east boundaries of Woodstock. The first several slides just provide some background information, so I won't spend a lot of time on that, but provided that for council's information. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we established some key principles for a countywide traffic calming approach that was adopted by County Council. And this allows for consistent application of these principles when we're undertaking speed reviews and considering traffic calming implementation measures on county roads. In two thousand and nineteen, we also collected speed data at over eighty locations on county roads throughout the county, primarily in built-up areas and communities and hamlets. So we received some concerns with speeding from residents on Oxford Road thirty and Oxford Road seventeen, so we developed a work plan to review existing conditions there and once we had completed our draft findings and recommendations, we did meet with City of Woodstock and ESR Tavistock Township staff as well as with OPP and Woodstock Police and and reviewed our findings. And then recently, we reviewed those, those outcomes with the residents that originally identified those concerns. Oxford Road seventeen, just along the north, north boundary of Woodstock, I'm sure most of you are familiar with, it's a boundary road with ESR Tavistock. Although I understand the, the road itself is entirely within the Woodstock boundaries, so properties on the north are in the township of ESR Tavistock, so it's a primarily, primarily a rural road with, with a small semi-urban cross-section through Havlock Corners and the surrounding land use. Urban residential, obviously, in the city of Woodstock, that has been expanding extensively over recent years with some rural residential and then agricultural to the north side. Oxford Road thirty or the eleventh line, similar to Oxford Road seventeen. It's a boundary road as well with ESR Tavistock and Woodstock. Primarily a rural road. Again, similar land use as Oxford Road seventeen where there's urban residential to the, to the east and then primarily rural or agricultural to the on the west side. And also there is a parking area for a recreational trail to the Burgess Trail there. The existing speed zones shown, shown on this map, Oxford Road seventeen shown in red through, through the study area is sixty kilometers per hour. Oxford Road thirty at the north end where it meets Oxford Road seventeen, there's a small section that's eighty kilometers per hour and then it reduces to sixty as you head southwards towards Oxford Road two. On Oxford Road seventeen, we collected speed data at the three locations shown on this map and measured average and eighty-fifth percentile speeds for both directions at those, at those, at each location shown there. Similar on Oxford Road thirty, we originally had a speed data collected just at the south end. And then following our initial review, we went back and collected some additional data at those other two points, locations three and locations two. This is a summary of the collision history on Oxford Road seventeen from, from the MTO database over a seven-year period from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and nineteen. So Oxford Road seventeen through, through the study area, total of seventeen collisions through that seven, seven-year period. On Oxford Road thirty, seven collisions between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and nineteen. We also use the Transportation Association of Canada or TAC guidelines to evaluate the recommended posted speeds on Oxford Road seventeen. We analyzed the four different segments listed there and compared the current posted speeds with the, with the TAC guideline criteria. And we're showing the comparison there and then with the last column shows our, our staff recommendation for, for the posted speed. Same on Oxford Road thirty, the two segments shown there were analyzed similarly using the, using the TAC guideline. I just wanted to speak briefly on appropriate posted speeds. Just important to note that having appropriate posted speeds reduces speed variation and, or speed differential and promotes a uniform or steady flow of traffic. And that, that results in reducing the risk of collisions. Improves enforcement effectiveness and enhances overall road safety. Speed variation or differential, it's widely known that it, it has a greater impact on collision rate than absolute, absolute speed. Where your risk of collision is lower when you have a steady, steady flow of traffic. Having posted speeds that are lower than, than your operating or your, or your road design can result in tailgating impatient drivers passing and then increasing that overall collision risk. So using the, the TAC guidelines again provides a an engineering-based, consistent approach and, and considering what, what the posted speech should be, although do need to understand the local conditions as well as any local and provincial policies related to speed. Our findings of the, of the speed review, operating speeds across Oxford Road seventeen and that sixty kilometer zone are, are excessive. On Oxford Road thirty, the speeds in the sixty zone to the southern section, again, were shown to be excessive. The current posted speeds on, on both those roads are below the TAC guideline for the recommended posted speed. The historical collision data didn't show any any obvious trends or speed-related trends in collisions. And we did look at the intersection collisions at any given intersection through those, through those study areas and nothing, nothing to show that intersection collisions meet warrants for, for an always start at any of those given intersections. And so the, the speed reduction on Oxford Road seventeen and Oxford Road thirty, when, when that was imposed, has not reduced vehicle operating speeds. Our recommendations on Oxford Road seventeen, although the TAC guideline criteria would indicate that it should be eighty kilometers through that area. It, it does have a very rural feel and it is a rural road, although with the dense residential development, excuse me, on the Woodstock side, we didn't feel a, a speed adjustment was appropriate there. However, at the west end, we are suggesting that we we move the start of the sixty zone slightly where the blue line is shown there along with a, an electronic speed feedback sign. And, and the street light just to provide, just to illuminate the, the entrance way, if you, if you want to call it that, into the, the smallest settlement cluster that's there. And then we're also showing a feed, speed, a speed feedback sign at this location as, on the east side as well at the start of the sixty zone. And then as you approach County Road fifty-nine and another speed sign there as well. On Oxford Road thirty, similarly, we're recommending to, to leave the posted speeds as they currently are with the addition of the electronic speed feedback signs at the, at either end there to advise drivers of, of their speeds. Some implementation measures for future consideration, obviously ongoing police enforcement. We know following our meeting up, when we presented our draft recommendations to, to staff and police OPP and Woodstock Police did, did conduct an enforcement blitz on Oxford Road seventeen. Automated speed enforcement with community safety zone designation is, is potentially an option. So we are looking at a a countywide program for automated speed enforcement, which will, which will consider for implementation for, for County Council's ultimate, ultimate approval. And part of that is, is the community's safety zone designation. And then over time, as development continues at the north end of Woodstock, we would expect to see the road urbanization to align with the, the built-up area there. Excuse me. Community watch program is something other municipalities have implemented where they offer the, the speed radar on, on a trailer for, for residents to volunteer and they, they set the trailer up and then residents can, can monitor the speeds in their neighborhood. And then record if it's a commercial vehicles or license plate numbers, so it provides them with an opportunity to, to see what, what operating speeds actually are like, so that's something that could be investigated further. Our next steps will be reporting to County Council with our recommendations on March twenty-fourth. And if approved, we'll be, we'll proceed with the speed zone adjustment at the west limit on Oxford Road seventeen as well as installation of the electronic speed feedback signs. And then we'll continue with ongoing monitoring to determine effectiveness of the, the measures that we implement. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, your worship. And through to Mr. Gross, just a excuse me, a couple of things. Is there any intention to expand this speed safety, road safety program research from Township Road fourteen along seventeen to Township Road four? I'm interested in that because the residential development there is quite unbelievable, actually, how fast it's growing out in that area. So more residents, more traffic, most of the traffic I suspect is going to flow eastward along seventeen towards four. And certainly, I'm not too sure, but I suspect at some point there'll be some sort of traffic signal other than a stop sign at seventeen and four. But I'm curious as to if you made any plans on this type of study from fourteen to four on seventeen?
Yeah, thank you through, through the mayor to, to the councillor. Oxford Road seventeen is identified in the county's transportation master plan, just, just to monitor traffic conditions as that area develops and it, it has been identified in some of the traffic studies that have been undertaken by developers there too that that a speed reduction on seventeen may be appropriate as it builds out, so, so we'll continue to monitor that and and look at the operating conditions as, as development continues there.
Okay, certainly, I would be interested and I suspect the rest of the council would still be interested in seeing a report once you've gathered more information there. And if, your worship, if you don't mind, I have a couple more questions I'll just continue with. Can you expand your definition of automatic speed enforcement?
Actually, I'll interject before, before we get the answer from Mr. Gross, if you could stop sharing the screen and we'll be able to get everybody back up on view. And did, was that everything you needed in that question, Councillor Fraser, or was there more you wanted?
Actually, I had a couple more, if you don't mind. Just, what do you, what actually do you mean by automatic speed enforcement? I would like to see automatic speed enforcement done with automatic radar, you know, that we had at one time that slowed everybody down on the four-hundred series highways. Certainly that's something I always wanted to see come back. Because if it reduces speed is, is automatic radar enforcement, right, to the vehicle, not necessarily the driver. So I was curious what your definition of automatic speed enforcement entails.
Yeah, thank you. So automated speed enforcement is, is currently permitted in school zones and community safety zones. So essentially photo radar. So again, to, to, to meet the regulatory requirements, it, it has to be a school zone as defined by the Highway Traffic Act or a community safety zone as designated by municipal council.
So that is something that's being taken into consideration. I don't consider community safety zones of any benefit unless there's enforcement, of course. There's certainly, that helps when there's enforcement, but the present enforcement by police officers, they can't be there all the time. And I think that was about it. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, through the mayor to Mr. Gross, maybe this is more of a philosophical question, anything else, because we do have a roundabout on the, on the seventeenth line. Would you think that in the future there might be one further east or would you prefer traffic signals further east, like I'm thinking around the fourteenth and the seventeenth, which is what Ron Fraser had alluded to, or maybe even the fifteenth and the seventeenth line? Where, where's the philosophies of roundabouts versus traffic lights? Where, where do they, I guess debated back and forth on?
Yeah, thank you, through the mayor to councillor Schadenberg. The counties, at the preference overall, would, would be to see roundabout over, over traffic signals. Just because of their, their lower maintenance requirements and their reduced environmental impact, it keeps traffic flowing. So again, that, that would be subject to, to more detailed review of a specific location, however.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Lauder?
Thank you, through to Frank. I have had requests for the, the speed to change on fifty-nine highway from the bridge to the roundabout and because it's it's so built up now and there, there's a lot of people walking there, there's a lot of people crossing the streets there from, from Lakeview across to, to crossings there. So I just wondered if there's any thought of if that changed from fifty, from sixty to fifty in that area?
Thank you. I believe we would, we would undertake a similar review then and collect some speed data there and do a similar analysis and, and we understand from Woodstock staff that, that, that request may be coming coming through Woodstock City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Acioli?
And more of a statement through to Mr. Gross that I'm not, I can't speak for all of council, of course, but I certainly get a lot of phone calls about the amount of speeding down that road of County Road seventeen, so I'm glad this was, when I saw this on the agenda and your stats, I really do appreciate seeing what you've done and where we're going with in the future, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Anything further? Well, thank you very much and we'll move on to our next delegation. Thank you. And so our next delegation, we have Virginia Armstrong, the manager of the Woodstock BIA. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to see everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor Birch, councillor, staff and guests. Today I have been requested by the Board of Management of the downtown Woodstock BIA who bring to council an amendment request for the C-five zone, which is the downtown. And under fifteen dash one uses permitted, they would like to ask that the following be excluded. And they are as listed, hostel, boarding house, homeless shelter, lodging, other than council-approved motel or slash hotels and refuge and church. So they have asked me to bring this to the board for consideration by council.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, your worship, through to Virginia. Thank you for that. I understand that, but I noticed in your submission, it also is talking about crosswalk painting. Are you going to address that as well too, or?
Oh, yes, I was just going to let questions come through, I guess, for this, but the crosswalk painting I can, I can touch on. All I want to say to that is it hasn't been completed due to the repaving of Dundas Street the first year last year due to COVID and it is our hope and our intent to have that done this year.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. Our next delegation, we have Terry DeCosta regarding an application for zone change that we'll hear a little later on on ninety-five Victoria Street. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Birch, your counsel. I'm here for any questions you guys may need.
Questions of council? Well, in the interest of the time that you took being set up and making sure that all the technology worked, do you want to give a high-level overview of what we're gonna hear later on and the viewers at home will have a good idea of what you have planned?
Okay, great. Yes, thanks again. So actually, right now, we're just going to defer the meeting, actually, what we had on, on Tuesday, because they're missing a couple of information, but what I'm proposing to do there, obviously, it was been a big project, it was a bigger project than I expected at the hotel and it's just, it was that rough a shape, but but in one way, it's taken its time, it's been good because it's been giving us some time to acquire some more land all the way around the property and gives us a more cleaner effect, I'm hoping by the end finished, finished product. So we now achieved a bunch of land behind, behind my existing building we had there and then we also bought a parcel from the town, there used to be the old bridge there, the Bay Street Bridge. Then we acquired a piece from the Union Gas portion, now we, we finally had everything kind of amalgamated together and approved through county. Either it was last fall or early January, I think it was last fall. Anyway, so now we just got a zone change. What are proposing to do there is obviously we're going to fence everything right off. I got ahold of CN and they're in favor of it so far, because that was my biggest concern, make sure they're okay with it. So what I want to do with, with the empty section between the existing old hotel there and the printing press is look at putting a three-story building up there. Originally, I was going to go all commercial and then the way COVID came all about and as an investment perspective, it makes it a little more difficult, you know, things, things happen ever again and then we get to the point that all the commercials close, tenants don't pay rent and everything, I didn't want to be stuck with a building that I can't make any income on. So that's why I'm figuring, maybe I should mix it with a little bit of commercial, a little bit of residential. I noticed over the last few years, there's been a lot of shortage for senior buildings. And I thought that would be a great spot for a second and third floor apartment building for some seniors that either fifty-five, sixteen up kind of thing that either are still maybe a little bit ready for retirement, but not quite, that maybe want to catch the train, go eat to the working kitchen or work in Toronto. Live close by, they can walk to the park, walk downtown, not too far away and still get a little bit of the restaurant there and a little bit of the commercial on the main floor. I've got an option for a drive-through, so I'm not sure if it's going to be in the medical section that we're looking at or a possible coffee shop with a drive-through down below and should have room for we got, we're in the electrical mechanical business, we've got not much of a yard, but more of a, an office and a garage area, so we can pull in, pick up, have parts delivered in there. But there'd be room for about two to four commercial units on the main floor. And totally, there are nine, nine to thirteen apartments, depending on the sizes, between the two floors. And yeah, with the option of either drive-through pharmacy or a drive-through coffee shop is what we're proposing. Try to accommodate some of the new turn of events that's been happening up there and still keep keep it cleaned and hopefully I can dress up that whole area somewhat nice. At the back of the building, obviously, we're going to have to put a noise wall, which we've talked to CN about and we're working with a company right now into designing for noise and impact. And at the end of the day, the apartment part of it, it basically will good will boil down to the impact and noise vibration analysis report. I mean, if that comes back, everything okay, then we'll proceed. And if it doesn't, well then I guess I'm stuck to commercial. But that's the intent, clean it up and hopefully make a nice uniform building so that they both kind of match and fence off the whole backyard of it. Maybe some decorative fence on the one side and part of the front. And clean up that corner, because it's, it's been, it's been a nice sort for a while and it's been a long go, obviously, we've been working on it as well as trying to work on our business and take care of customers, but it's getting there. Now, in kind of one way, it was kind of good, it's kind of a little bit delayed because now we've come up with all these different perspectives and all the additional land around this to make it fit. And we'll accommodate for the parking, et cetera, et cetera. Other than that, I think it's going to look good. I think it'll clean up the area and get a little bit of multiple use there.
Well, thank you very much for highlighting that for us, and consider this a dry run as council will be deferring it, and we'll have you back in the future. Thank you very much.
Sounds great.
Now we'll go, we'll go on to consideration of delegations. So our first one is a motion on the presentation regarding speed control measures from the county. Counselor Acioli.
And move by myself, the Woodstock City Council support the recommendations presented by the Oxford County Public Works Department regarding speed and road safety concerns on Oxford Road seventeen and Oxford Road thirty.
Thank you. And a seconder. Counselor Fraser, discussion. Counselor Fraser.
I was just going to second the motion, your worship.
Thank you. We've heard the motion, all those in favor. And Kerry is unanimous. And next up is the presentation from the BIA. Counselor Fraser and seconded by Counselor Talbot.
For your worship, the Woodstock City Council refer the request from the downtown Woodstock BIA to restrict limited uses in the C five zone under the city's zoning by law to planning staff for report.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And Kerry's unanimous, and we don't need one for Victoria Street, and so we'll move on to planning reports, looking for a mover and a seconder for the deferral on ninety-five Victoria Street. Counselor Acioli and a seconder. Counselor Talbot.
Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council defer the application for lands described as part block A, Plan one sixty, parts three to ten, forty-one R nine four seven zero, parts one and two, forty-one R nine four seven zero. Part lots nineteen and twenty concession one east Oxford, part lot seven, eight, eleven and twelve, north side of Henry Street. Plan two twelve in the city of Woodstock, rezone the subject property from traditional, sorry, transitional industrial zone M four and highway commercial zone C four to highway commercial zone C four and special highway commercial zone to satisfy conditions. A recently approved severance applications B seventeen dash twenty-six dash eight and B twenty dash forty-four dash eight. And to facilitate the development of a three-story commercial building with residential uses in the upper levels.
Thank you. Discussion. I think we'll save our planner on this one for when it comes back. You've heard the motion, all those in favor. And Kerry's unanimous. Next one is for the zone change on the west side of Griffin Way, south of Devonshire. Looking for a mover and a seconder. We'll go Counselor Fraser as the mover and seconder Counselor Acioli. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. The Woodstock City Council approved the application for zone change file number Z N eight dash twenty dash twenty-three submitted by the city of Woodstock, lands described as part block four forty-one M dash three six two being part two, Plan forty-one R dash one zero zero five five in the city of Woodstock, and whereby the lands are proposed to be rezoned from special general industrial zone M three dash fourteen to special general industrial zone M three dash thirty-five to facilitate the development of a pharmaceutical and drug product industry for the purposes of cannabis research, growing and processing. Inferiorly, that any comments received in the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. Ms. Hashler, welcome.
Thank you. So this application for zone change is currently owned by the city of Woodstock. But the applicant is is actually a number company from Toronto, which is looking to establish the proposed use. So the application for zone change is to rezone the lands from a special general industrial zone, which is M three dash fourteen, which is applied to the the subject property as well as the surrounding lands, which are all part of the city's industrial park. And then the applicant is proposing to rezone the lands to a special general or to an amended special general industrial zone, which would be M three dash thirty-five. And that would be to permit a pharmaceutical and drug product industry, and that would be for the purposes of cannabis research, and then they would also be growing and processing the the plant there, the plants there as well. So as council may recall, the subject proposal. Oh, sorry. So so I just got a note here that Counselor Fraser is having difficulty hearing me. Is there anyone else that's having issues hearing me? Okay, my apologies. I'll try to speak up a bit louder and tell me if I'm I'm too loud. Okay, so the proposal for the the pharmaceutical and drug product industry is very similar to a proposal that council would have seen a number of months ago, and that's for that was for the lands that are directly on south of Devonshire, and it was basically for for the exact same type of use. And so council may recall, too, at the time, we had discussions about locating these types of uses in the business parks, which are generally used as a buffer between residential and heavier industrial type uses. And it was determined that perhaps that was not the best approach, as we don't always know if these types of uses can produce odor, and so we didn't want them to be beside residential uses. So in this case, the applicant is proposing this development within the traditional industrial park. And so we feel that this type of use is is suitable. It may other uses in the area may be associated with noise, vibration, odors and whatnot. And and so this is probably a more appropriate place for a use like this. At the general industrial, the special general industrial zone that's already permitted in this area supports heavier industrial type uses, such as assembly plants, truck terminals, fabricating plants and feed mills, and and so this use would be would fit in quite well. We feel that the use promotes economic development. It's also a good use of of a vacant parcel and good use of infrastructure in the area. And we feel that it's in keeping with the policies of the traditional industrial designation. We also feel that the applicant has submitted a very general site plan. So we feel that based on the general site plan that it is compliant with the proposed zoning provisions. However, the applicant has also indicated to us that they will be able to, when they have a a more advanced concept plan, that it will comply with the provisions of the bylaw. And so the applicant has not requested any site-specific provisions in this case. So in light of our review, we'd recommend that this application be approved by council.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. It's not really a question to the planner, but it's a comment overall. We seem to be getting more than our fair share of these applications for this type of facility. And we've already approved some. I guess I have grave concern that these companies are all coming west. And they seem, I don't know if this particular one has tried to purchase lands in other areas along the way. But they keep coming this way, hoping that someone will say yes, and because we have to a few in the past. My personal thoughts are is that we have more than we need. I think that the province needs to look at these facilities and consider putting them in an agricultural area. Due to the way I I it's more, I mean, especially when they're actually growing it. I have seen in areas where it is out in the country, and to me, I mean, it's usually a standalone facility, but there is an odor that does come from it. Now, maybe it's the way it was designed, but I really don't think they belong in our industrial parks, so I won't be supporting the application, and I would like a recorded vote, please.
Thank you. Counselor Tate. Counselor Tate.
I can't hear you, Trevor.
Sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Tate.
Just echoing Counselor Talbot's comments, actually, Counselor Lotter and I had a discussion about that exact same thing. We're concerned that so many are coming this way. And then last night, they were talking about the green belt expanding further, which is going to affect us, so we're going to get more of these. I do think this is a terrible location. I will not be supporting. I haven't supported any of them other than the one down in Comsey. They should be in a different location, and I understand the concerns of the other people in the business parks, so I won't be supporting it either.
Thank you, Counselor Acioli.
Thank you, your worship. I too am not in favor of this location. I did second the motion just simply to bring it to the floor. I've got the same concerns. I'm not going to repeat everything. It's just with the residential area being that close. You know, maybe some future areas that are farther on the outskirts of the town and everything that might be more in favor of, but I think with the green belt and everything else, I think the exact same concerns as Counselor Talbot has been. So just want to echo that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Lotter.
I echo the same concerns that my fellow counselors have. Yes, and Counselor Tate and I had talked about this. And it's just, there just seems like too many of them coming this way, so I won't support this either.
Thank you. Counselor Schattenberg.
It's my comment through you to the chair would be the fact that we did approve the one at the corner of Griffin Way and Devonshire, which, if anything, that is the one that's in more of a visible location than than this one further down, and by I guess lot four, lot five, the fifth lot off of off of Devonshire, and hate to think that we've set the the precedence to be the one at the corner of Devonshire and Griffin Way was was approved. Now we could turn around and not approve one that's even further away from from everything else amenities. I could think of schools and and Cowan Fields and church and everything else that's in that area. So I think unfortunately, we've we've set the precedence, and I hate to be the one to be a positive off something that maybe in theory I'm negative to, but we I think we've set the precedence, so I'll have to be vote vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Counselor Acioli.
Yeah, thank you, worship. And that's, that's why I've been going back and forth to what Counselor Schattenberg has said, because we have kind of set that precedent. I think our position, or in my opinion anyways, as a city, we have such limited land use right now for other businesses that I guess I'm looking for more of a variety, I'm hoping, than you know, duplicating other things myself. So, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. Just in response, I understand where Counselor Schattenberg is coming from. He makes a very strong point. I guess my biggest concern is similar to Counselor Acioli's, is we are tight on industrial land. We are developing more, but I mean, I think that our community is better suited to other uses. And when does, when does enough become enough? The facility on Tecumseh is quite large. I thought I saw a cannabis leaf on Firestone's old building, and we have approved the one on the corner of Devonshire and Griffin Way. And I mean, if 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 this is what we're opening up to, I mean, might as well put a for sale sign on the highway and say, bring all your companies here. And because they're looking for places to put up these facilities. And if they know that we're willing, but I I think as a community ourselves, we have to decide how many more of this type of industry do we need in our community? And everybody is quite well aware that the farther that you come west, the land is cheaper. And they can build their facilities a lot less than keeping them close to Toronto. Again, I don't know, we need to go to the province and say, hey, maybe you guys need to look at rezoning this. I'm putting it in an agricultural area or limiting the number of these facilities that are actually going to be licensed and and put up, like you hear so many different stories about how much cannabis is actually on the market. People are still going, whether it's medical or whatever, they're going to other areas and producing, they're not even buying this stuff. So I I think we really need to take a hard look and maybe draw a very hard line in the sand going forward that we're not interested.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Schattenberg.
Yeah, a few to the chair. I guess I don't want to use the word precedent again, but obviously, by saying it, I I've just used the word precedent again. Last July ninth, I think it was the council meeting in twenty twenty, it came to a sale of property of the city of Woodstock for this specific use of this cannabis. And now we're, now they're coming back to us asking for zoning change, so we've approved the sale of the property subject to a zoning change. Now they're coming to us for a zoning change, and we're going to say no when we've already kind of given them a half thumbs up to the purchasing the property on Griffin Way in the first place. And and I'm not saying we're we're sound like we're backtracking by. Again, I'm hedging at both directions, too, but we've already sort of given them conditional approval on buying the property initially last summer.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, then there's our clerk. Welcome for the vote.
And thank you, worship. So the motion on the floor is to approve the application, and Counselor Talbot had asked, has asked for a recorded vote, so we will start with Counselor Talbot.
No.
Counselor Acioli.
No.
Mayor Birch.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Birch, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Is that a, a yes?
Yes.
Counselor Fraser.
Yes.
Counselor Lotter.
No.
Counselor Schattenberg.
Yes.
And Counselor Tate.
No.
Okay, thank you. The motion is defeated.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Now we'll need a motion to not approve with the rationale from council. Counselor Fraser.
I'll try and work my way through this. And our clerk can correct me as we go. The Woodstock Council, Woodstock City Council not approve the application for zone change file number Z N eight dash twenty dash twenty-three submitted by the city of Woodstock for lands described as part block four forty-one M dash three six two being part two, Plan forty-one R dash one zero zero five five in the city of Woodstock, whereby the lands are proposed to be rezoned from special general industrial zone M three dash fourteen to special general industrial zone M three dash thirty-five to facilitate the development of pharmaceutical and drug product industry for the purposes of cannabis research, growing and possession. Based on the reasoning of Woodstock Council that this is not an appropriate use for this land within the city considering our shortage of industrial land for sale and the fact that we have already approved previous locations. And we're of the opinion we're reading the, reaching the maximum amount that we should consider. I hope that sounds right.
Thank you. And just looking for the clerk, her thoughts on that motion.
I think that will suffice, your worship. I've got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Looking for a seconder. We'll go with Counselor Tate and discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor. And approved. So approving meaning denied. Thank you. And our next item on the planning agenda, we have the application for zone change for three oh five Robinson Street. So looking for a mover. Uh, so looking for a mover and a seconder on that one. Uh, Counselor Talbot and a seconder, Counselor Lauder. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the application for lands described as part lot twenty-five, plan seventy-seven being parts two, five. Forty-one R eighty-two eighteen and part lot one, plan M three in the city of Woodstock to rezone the subject property. From special residential zone one, R one twenty-six to special residential zone two, R two thirty-six. To facilitate the construction of a duplex. And further that any comments received in the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made. In relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. Ms. Hasler, welcome. Can everybody hear me? Ms. Hasler, uh, we'll turn it over to you.
So this application for his own change is to rezone our property that council may recall has had. Has been created first of all as, uh, it was originally part of a rear yard infill parcel. And then, uh, later on, so the original one was done in two thousand and seven. And then the applicant added additional land in two thousand and nineteen. And so there's a fairly. Large parcel that's being created behind the parcels on Robinson Street. And the applicant has approval to zip, to build a single detached dwelling, but has since applied for this zone change to. Facilitated duplex on the subject property. I'll just scroll down here and I can show what the applicant is actually proposing. I should note too that the applicant, the site-specific zoning would also address a reduced frontage. So with a duplex, the frontage is required to be eighteen meters. And in this case, the applicant is proposing five point five meters. So this was originally approved. Um, when the severances and zone change were, um. Originally approved in two thousand and nineteen and that was for the reduced frontage for a single detached dwelling. And now because the applicants. Um, applying for a duplex, we would have to amend that, um, that in the zoning to allow for that reduced frontage for the duplex. So that's, that's why council is seeing that today. Um, the overall size of the property is two thousand nine hundred and forty square meters. And site-specific zoning that was done previously as well had required that the building be located in a specific spot. So as to not compromise any future development of the area as, uh, council is probably aware. There's a lot of these lots in the Robinson Street area have very deep, um, depths to them. And the thought is that at some point in time, perhaps if someone came along and assembled all the parcels. Then, uh, there could be another, a smaller subdivision that would go in, in that area. And so. We are also recommending that, um, that provision with respect to the setbacks of where the dwelling would be located. That that would be carried through into this proposed R two dash thirty-six zoning as well. The subject property is designated low-density residential, which permits a variety of low-density type dwelling types. So single semis, towns and low-rise apartment buildings. Uh, the proposal is in keeping with the density for low-density residential. And, uh, the property being zoned, being rezoned to an R two meets all the provisions of the R two zoning. Uh, the application was circulated to staff and staff were supportive of the application. And we did not receive any comments or concerns from neighboring property owners. So our opinion is that the application is, uh, promotes infill and intensification. Uh, it's suitable for the area, although we're introducing, um, a, a duplex to the area, which is predominantly. Single detached dwellings. It is set back behind houses on Robinson Street, so it, it shouldn't affect the character of, uh. Of the streetscape or the, or the area. Um, and then we also feel that the site is obviously large enough to facilitate, uh, adequate parking. In fact, the applicant's proposing to provide six spaces for the, the two units. Uh, there's also adequate space for drainage grading and landscaping. So in light of that, we recommend that this application be approved.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. Just in a, in a comment at the planning meeting on Tuesday evening, uh, I believe it was a neighbor was concerned about some of the mature trees. That were, um, going to, or how many were going to be affected. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Mr. Ead had said that there was only two being removed. And that there would be others planting. Is, was that correct, um, Ms. Hasler?
So through Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Birch to Counselor Talbot, I believe you're correct. There were two trees. Uh, the one was, I believe in very poor shape and the other one, uh, he had indicated that he would be replacing at a ratio of three to one. On the site.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, next items on the agenda is our correspondence and our first item is from. Uh, Radiant Health Yoga owner Catherine DeBour with requests for relief for permit fees for use of Roth Park. Uh, Counselor Talbot and, uh. Let's go, we'll hear what the motion is and then we'll see for a second or go ahead.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approves the request from Radiant Health Yoga for temporary relief from the permit fee for the use of Roth Park. For outdoor yoga classes up to four times per week until October thirty-first, twenty-one.
Thank you. And a seconder. Uh, Counselor Fraser, discussion. Counselor Schattenberg.
Yeah, through the chair, maybe to the Parks Department. I was wanting to know what, if you want to attach some dollars and cents to this about. How much are we, I'm saying giving away, but if we were, if we were to accept this, uh, this, uh, bylaw, this idea. How much would somebody be paying in normal circumstances to pay rent for an hour of a park space like this?
Uh, your worship through to the counselor's question. Um, on the fee by law, I believe, uh, that space is, uh. Six dollars an hour. I'll have to double check. Um, so it isn't much, but one of the more important, uh, pieces. To this is, um, there's no additional expenditures. Um, we would be cutting the grass on, in this park space. No matter what, where, um, if people are asking for building space or other spaces, there are additional expenditures. Or if someone was asking for a ball field, let's say there's additional expenditures to getting that set up, um, where this one doesn't.
Thank you, Counselor Talbot.
Um, I just wanted to comment that, um, Catherine has ran Radiant Health downtown for quite some time and, um. I mean, she's only one of many businesses that have been affected by COVID. And we still don't know where this is all going this year. I mean, um, the way that vaccines are being rolled out and the way that, um. Um, the variants are coming through. We could be in this type of situation for still some time to come, even if we look forward. And I'm thinking that if we can do something, um, and as, um, Mr. Connors has said, the hourly rate is not a, a huge sum. But if we can give some type of relief so that, um, people are still able to do, uh, a business, then, um, I think we should try and help them. Cause I mean, it's getting very hard for some to stay in business these days.
Thank you. And, uh, Counselor Lauder.
Thank you. Just a comment. Um, yes, waiving the fees is against the city's, uh, policy and under nor- normal circumstances. Then we would be looking at this in, in a different way, but, um, but the struggling businesses, I think we have to do everything we can to help. Uh, help them and it's not going to cost us anything. So, um, I certainly agree with this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Acioli.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just want to basically say the same thing that, uh, of course our, our hearts, our hearts and thoughts go out to all business owners. These days trying to just simply survive and, uh, such a small, um, part we can do as a city council to assist another business. And encourage all businesses to kind of think outside of the box of ways they can, um. You know, survive at this point, let alone just, uh, be profitable, but survival is, uh, is key. So. I appreciate Catherine's, um, you know, sending the submission and certainly support it and encourage everybody else to look at. Um, supporting as many small businesses as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think, uh, we may end up having quite a few more of these come to council for. Uh, karate lessons, taekwondo, dance studios, weightlifting and several other businesses. So I guess, uh. We'll be prepared to hear more of these in the future. Uh, you've heard the motion. All those in favor. And carries. And our next item on the agenda is the correspondence regarding county council composition. From the town of Ingersoll, uh, Counselor Tate.
Um, I'll make the motion that Woodstock City Council supports the proposed changes to the composition of Oxford County Council, council is outlined in report number. Eight dash zero zero two dash two one from the town of Ingersoll.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Fraser and discussion. Counselor Tate.
Hey, could I just have, um, the C O comment on this resolution to explain it to the public, what it says and the effect it would have? Um, I know I've had comments from. Not the public, but other people saying that, um, per taxpayer, our taxpayers are paying the same amount. As one of the township taxpayers. So I just, if you could just clarify what this motion was. Thanks.
Your worship, uh, through to, uh, Counselor Tate. Um, just by way of background. Uh, in November, uh, Warden and Township of Norwich Mayor Larry Martin attended all of the area municipal council meetings. Uh, seeking support for the status quo for the county council composition of, uh, ten representatives. Uh, the status quo did not obtain the required triple majority support to confirm this composition. And I believe there's a, a looming deadline of the end of March to provide the province with a county council composition. Supported by a triple majority of the area municipalities. In failing this, the Minister of Municipal Affairs can make a regulation to conduct a review, but in this review, the minister shall have regard. To the principle of representation by population. So I'm not aware of any other proposals for, uh, county council composition, uh, from the county. Uh, being forwarded, uh, between now and the looming deadline. And so I think, uh, Ingersoll is to be applauded for taking this leadership position and proposing a fresh alternative. That actually has regard to the principle of representation by population. And what they're essentially proposing is, uh, taking a, an approach using the number of electors. Uh, in each area municipality that is determined, uh, in the year of a municipal election. Every municipality would receive one vote at county council for the first six thousand electors. That guarantees everyone has, every township, every municipality in the county has one vote. Up to the first six thousand electors. For every full six thousand electors thereafter. A municipality will get a second vote. And every six thousand electors thereafter, I gain another vote. Uh, based on the last election results. Uh, the result would be Woodstock would get vote, four votes, Tilsenberg would get two votes. And every other area municipality in the county would get one vote, resulting in, in a total of twelve votes. Versus the current ten votes. The, uh, there is, there is no, uh, um, proposal here to increase the number of political representatives at the county. It is simply a weighted approach to voting. And so by way of example, if Woodstock received four votes at county council. Our three county council representatives made up of, that is worshiped the mayor and our two county counselors. Their votes would count for one point three three for every time they raised their hand. In the case of Tilsenberg, which has a two-vote weight, every time the mayor of Tilsenberg votes in favor of something or against. That carries a share of two point oh. Everyone else on county council, every time they vote, it would carry a weight of one. Uh, this is not a complicated, uh, method of voting whatsoever. And in fact, the. The agenda management software that the county council currently uses has embedded within it. A ability to undertake weighted voting. So, uh, this is something that, uh, I think brings us far closer to the principle of population. Representation by population than the status quo. And, uh, and, uh, as staff, we certainly support this.
Thank you. And, uh, for the benefit of the listeners, uh. Our conservation authority, the, the largest one that, uh, we deal with here in our community, uh, Upper Thames Conservation Authority, of course. It takes in communities from Perth, Stratford, here in Oxford, Woodstock, through, uh, Middlesex, uh, to London. And, uh, many of our, uh, municipal politicians have sat on that board for years from some of our neighboring municipalities. And of course are quite familiar with, uh, weighted vote process and very good point, uh, made regarding the existence of. The ability within the agenda software that the county utilizes right now. Uh, Counselor Tate.
Yeah, just through to the C O, I just had, um, further to that. I just wondered if he could comment, um. Right now, what the burden is in our taxpayers for, um, anything that we pass at the county compared to say a smaller township. And can I have a recorded vote on this too, please?
Hi, your worship through to, uh, Counselor Tate. Um. Uh, based on the, the, the current, uh, levy numbers, as I understand them, uh, the. Uh, the city of Woodstock carries greater than a thirty-six percent share of the county levy, but only, uh. Uh, only maintains a thirty percent, um, representation by vote, uh, at county council. Um, is, is that, uh, is that the, the, uh, the substance of the question, Counselor Tate?
Yeah, that's good.
Counselor Schattenberg.
Maybe there's a point of clarification as much as anything else, uh, Chairman, maybe, uh, one of the three members on county council can answer this question. This does not solve the scenario though, but as to how the warden will be elected, um, at every election, every four years. This just goes the waiting system. At every specific, uh, meeting and on every specific bylaw and motion.
Yeah, you would be correct in that. So this doesn't address, uh, anything with the selection of warden. It's more about the representation and the votes that. Uh, take place by the representatives. Further discussion. Okay, then we'll have the clerk back on. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Um, so Counselor Tate had asked for the recorded vote, so we will start with you, Counselor Tate.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Talbot.
No.
Counselor Acioli.
Yes.
Mayor Birch.
Yes.
Counselor Fraser.
Yes.
Counselor Lauder.
Yes.
And Counselor Schattenberg.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is carried.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have, uh, the correspondence regarding the tax rate. For rail right-of-ways, uh, Counselor Lauder.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-one received from the Township of Terrace Bay. Requesting the Minister of Finance of the Province of Ontario to undertake ongoing consideration of municipal taxation for railway. Railroad rights of way properties based on a per ton mile concept. And further that this resolution be circulated to the Township of Terrace Bay, the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario. The Honorable Peter Beth Lynn Philippi, Minister of Finance of Ontario. The Honorable Dave McKenzie, Oxford MP, the Honorable Ernie Hardiman, Oxford M P P. The Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association. And the Rural Ontario Municipal Association.
Thank you. And a seconder. We'll go Counselor Schattenberg, discussion. Counselor Lauder.
Um, could I have, um, Mrs. Hildery speak to this resolution?
I, I was gonna say that based on all your. I was gonna say that based on all your years of experience within the finance department, continuing with your consultancy work afterwards, that you would be able to explain payment lose and rail rates, but we do have the treasurer here with us. So go ahead, Ms. Hildery.
Thank you. Your worship through to Counselor Lotter. Basically, this is a, an idea of how we make the railways pay for the rights of way they have across our lands. Basically, the rights of way are where their, where their railway tracks run and they have to pay property taxes on that. In Ontario, the concept is they pay on a per acreage basis. M P A tells us how many acres we have. The Ministry of Finance sets the rate and that's how we, we build the railway companies. The other option that many provinces use in Canada is called the per ton mile. And this basically looks at the total amount of tonnage just taken across the rails within a jurisdiction. They apply a, a small factor for cost per kilometer and they come up with the assessed value. What happens then is municipalities use the assessed value and their own tax rates. The contention is that it's many circumstances, this will relate, result in higher taxation, which in will help municipalities finance the various costs we have associated to having railway rights of way in our, in our community, such as maintaining crossing, level crossings and things like that. So I would suggest that it would be appropriate to support this motion.
Thank you very much. Counselor Accioni.
Thank you, your worship, through to Ms. Hildery. Just layman's term, I'm definitely not a tax expert as as you or Counselor Lotter is. Per dollar basis. So if we get one dollar right now, as it is per acreage versus the per ton, what would, what would we be approximately? Could you kind of give me an idea?
Actually, right now we receive about six hundred and eighteen dollars per acre for, for this in, in the city. And I think we have about five or six acres that we, we can bill on, so it's not huge. The per ton will depend on whether we're high usage. And I can't give you an estimate on that. But a few years ago, the province did suggest that they would take a look at this. We came to council with a report requesting approval to ask the minister. And nothing happened from that at that point in time. So they're really, it's time to have a look at it again, I think.
If I continue, I'm just more concerned, of course, that we go and vote for this change and we end up getting less. Is there any fear of that? At all, in your opinion?
Again, it depends on the volume of tonnage that we get in the municipality. The other side of the point, the issue right now is that the Minister of Finance has not increased the per acreage rate since two thousand and eighteen, I believe. So that's the other, that's the other thing that will be encouraged as well as they, they make a consideration of that. And the motion really is asking the counts of the province to investigate the feasibility.
Yeah, I do get that. I was more curious. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries unanimous. And next up, we have the introduction and overview regarding our two thousand and twenty-one revenue fund. And so budget time again, and we have our Chief Administrative Officer, David Hildery. And again, we have our Director of Administrative Services, our Treasurer, Patrice Hildery. So welcome, and we'll see that up on the screen now.
Thank you, your worship. So this afternoon, Mrs. Hildery and myself, not David Hildery, will provide a high level overview of the two thousand and twenty-one revenue fund budget. This this will be followed by a detailed line by line overview. That is page by page, line by line overview of each city department budget over two evenings next week being Tuesday and Thursday, the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth, starting at five P M. The departmental lineup is as shown on this slide. Budgets from the Police Services Board, Library Board, the Art Gallery Advisory Board will be presented during the March fourth city council meeting. And these are all open meetings of city council, which will be held virtually, live streamed and recorded to YouTube so that residents can access them. Budget documents will be available on the city website, as will video recordings of these budget meetings. And the budget approval is scheduled for the March eighteenth meeting of city council. So just to wind it back for a moment to the two thousand and twenty budget. As council was deliberating and set to approve the two thousand and twenty budget, the province went into lockdown. That delayed our budget approval until April. Council approved the base budget as presented by staff, but did not approve any of the additions to the base budget with one exception. And that was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution from the two thousand and nineteen budget surplus that was included to partially offset the financial impact of the pandemic. Now, throughout the year, council did approve some of those additions to base budget on a piecemeal basis through staff reports at council meetings. But the vast majority of them remain unapproved and you will see many of them again in the two thousand and twenty additions to base budget. So just in a, in a very high level snapshot, the two thousand and twenty-one base budget, the important number is the tax levy. And based on this base budget, it's sixty-one point eight million dollars. It represents about a two point eight million dollar increase over two thousand and twenty. In percentage terms, that's four point nine. And it produces a two point five one percent change in the tax rate. This lays out the tax levy increases over a number of past years. These tax levy increases, you can see two thousand and twenty-one proposal just shy of two point nine million is consistent with the levy increases in each of the more recent years. I think the important thing to highlight though is that the these increases in prior years represent the total levy increase and include any additions to base budget that were approved by city council. The levy increase this year, it's important to note, represents just the base budget without any increases from those additions to base budget that council may approve. And I, and I, I forgot to mention earlier, I wanted to preface the budget discussion by saying that this is definitely not a normal budget. There are several pressures that are impacting this budget, and one of them is obviously the ongoing pandemic. Staff began preparing budget estimates in the fall of last year when Woodstock was in the yellow protect tier for pandemic restrictions. And then came along the second emergency declaration lockdown and stay at home order from the province that was issued at Christmas time. Realizing that the budget was now overly optimistic, staff revisited their budget proposals to reflect this likely reality of a lockdown till mid February. And so while this budget reflects our current reality, there may be more circumstances that arise throughout the year that take us off course from these estimates. So moving on, we'll take a closer look now at some of the impacts to the budget this year. Speaking specifically about budget revenues, the overall user fees are significantly reduced from what we would consider to be a normal year. And to put some scale to that, it's approximately a million dollars of user fee reductions just in the parks and recreation area alone. And about another quarter of a million dollars in transit fares alone. So there's a significant impact to the budget because of the impacts from the, the ongoing pandemic. The O L G slot funding is, is another issue in the budget. The city receives a share of net revenue from gaming at the Woodstock Slots Facility. But because of the facility closure, as well as restricted occupancy throughout the year, payments under this agreement have been reduced. The city uses O L G funding to support the Community Grants Program and other grants, capital financing, as well as just generally taxpayer relief. Now, we apply this funding one year behind, meaning we spend funds that were received in two thousand and twenty in the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. Now, that means the two thousand and twenty-two budget will similarly be impacted from revenue reductions that result from closures and restricted occupancy that occurs during this year. So this year, the, the, the impact to the budget is a reduction of about one point one four million dollars of funding from this item alone. We also are experiencing reduced rental incomes because of the Hydro One and Market Centre leases coming to their end. Now, on the positive side, we'll move to some good news. The city continues to experience strong growth. Whereas an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget from additional taxes that comes from growth through mid-year assessments. And overall, there's about a two point three percent assessment increase that is related related completely to growth, meaning new construction in the city. The budget also includes funding from the province under the Safe Restart Ontario funding. And that has been used to help mitigate some of the, the impacts to our revenues, as well as some of our increased expenditures. Now, moving to the expenditure side of the budget. Tax adjustments, there's an increase of about one million dollars. This is another factor that has a huge impact on the two thousand and twenty-one budget. The one month million dollar increase in tax adjustments represents more than a third of the levy increase this year. So tax adjustments are property tax reimbursements to property owners who have successfully appealed their property assessment. And these property assessments are established by M P A, the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. And the increase this year relates to a singular assessment appeal by a large industrial manufacturer in the city. This appeal has been going on for quite some time, resulting in about nine years now of property taxes under appeal. M P A unfortunately has frustrated the advancement of this appeal over these years through nonresponsiveness and refusal to negotiate settlement offers, which brings us to this lengthy backlog of assessment years. And staff are hopeful that the issue can be brought to a resolution this year. Now, moving on to reduce costs, the budget, we've reduced costs in areas where we know that the pandemic will, will have a a significant impact on our ability to deliver programs and services. And specifically in special events, there's a number of special events that we're just simply not budgeting for because there's little hope that we'll be able to, to run these events. Examples include the art in the park, Victoria Day festivities, even Cowapalooza. We are hopeful that we can still have some Canada Day celebration in the form of fireworks display. And you'll hear more about that in budget presentations next week. Another area of significant reductions is in the area of programming where we're simply not able to deliver the programming because of the restrictions as laid out by provincial regulation and recommendations of our health professionals. There's increased costs in the budget is a result of COVID, in terms of personal protection equipment as well as I T costs to deploy more remote work capabilities in our organization. And there's still echoes of the cybersecurity attack from two thousand and nineteen in our budget in the form of of cybersecurity improvements that are ongoing. Okay, so we'll just turn our attention now to some of the recommendations for additions to base budget. So recognizing we're not in a normal budget year, that there's great uncertainty in the budget this year. And that the base budget, as it stands currently has a comparable increase to our prior years. Staff approached the additions to base budget with a goal of minimizing the need for financing any addition to base budget from the levy. And to defer any item where the only source of financing as possible is from the levy. And so an example of this is in the reserve contributions where annually we request council to consider increasing reserve contributions for the asphalt reserve as an example. This year, we're recommending deferral of that to two thousand and twenty-two. There's simply no source to fund that other than the levy in a sustainable way. All of these are supported by the city's strategic plan, but given the current circumstances and the realities that we're facing this year, staff are recommending that we just postpone consideration of these until next year. There's a number of recommendations for increases in staffing in, in your proposals. In the building department alone, we've seen significant increase in workload because of the increase in construction in the city. We've seen that in our annual building reports. And this year, there's a proposal to create a new position, a deputy chief building official, as well as add a temporary full-time building inspector to provide seasonal relief to the peak demand for inspections during the summer seasons. Both of these are financed from the building permit fee reserve and do not affect the tax levy. There is a request from our administrative services department for a part-time tax clerk. There are two recommendations for additional staffing and economic development. The first is a small business center. There's a request for a full-time business advisor. And this is a, this is in an area where there is perhaps a difference of opinion. While the department recommends a full-time staff position be approved by council, I've recommended something somewhat different. I've recommended that this be a contract position that uses a COVID funding grant so that the levy is not impacted for this year. Now, the downtown development plan recommended council consider creating a new position called a downtown coordinator. We've included this for your consideration in the budget, but we are recommending deferral of this to two thousand and twenty-two. And the reason we're doing that is we're, we're preferring instead to, to recommend the advancement of a downtown street peer outreach coordinator program in partnership with the Canadian Mental Health Association that will help support our downtown businesses in, in managing the current the current difficulties in the downtown with respect to the ongoing drug addictions as well as homelessness issue. So we believe the downtown merchants would prefer to see council address that issue as a priority. In Public Works, we have a request for a skilled laborer full-time. In terms of service level changes, at the two thousand and twenty budget council was presented with a proposal to introduce the seventh transit route that did not get approved last year. We're bringing it forward again. This time, we're recommending that it be funded out of provincial dedicated gas tax for this year, again, to minimize impact to the tax levy. There's a recommendation from Public Works to reduce the large article curbs I pick up from two times a year to once per year. And as well, the downtown streets, Canadian Mental Health Association Peer Outreach Initiative. There's a number of miscellaneous recommendations for additions to base budget, and all of these will be considered in greater detail by your department heads. And all of these will be considered in greater detail by your department heads in their budget presentations next week. So in summary. These recommendations for additions to base budget, the financing for these would be as follows. The levy would be approximately two hundred and thirty thousand. The balance will be funded from either gas tax, building permit refer reserve, contingency reserve, and the COVID grant for the small business center. And so these will all be reviewed in more detail as we advance through the budget meetings next week. And at this point, I, oh, sorry, one more slide and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hilterly. There are two options to mitigate the levy increase. The first is to increase transit fares that coincides with the increase in transit service with the introduction of a seventh route. As well as the paratransit policy amendment. Both of these were introduced to council in the two thousand and twenty budget. And and are brought forward again for your consideration again this year. And with that, your worship, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hilterly.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. This slide is one that council sees every year. It's how the proposed levy is going to be spent. And as always, the biggest piece of piece of the pie goes to our protective services, forty-two point one percent. And that's for the police and fire. We spend about fifteen percent on general government. Fourteen percent on roadways and storm, and then the balance of the funds are spread over the other categories as as listed there. This is the two thousand and twenty twenty one revenue sources. This is how we pay for our budget. The largest piece always is taxation and it's seventy-one percent. Now, as a revenue source this year is down from last year, which was seventy-three percent, but that is specifically due to the the land sales that we have gone. Last year was two percent that we predicted would come in from land sales. And this year, it's eight percent. The rest of the pie is relatively unchanged from last year. The assessment is noted by Mr. Curry. We do have some assessment growth, and that was two point three percent. However, the province-wide reassessment has been delayed, so that means for the majority of our taxpayers, their assessment will not change. It'll be the same as they had last year. The only difference would be if they had built a new property and received supplementary assessment. Or if they had appealed their assessment and it went down. So this year, we're using the single detached dwelling that is assessed at two hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-three. The same as it was in two thousand and twenty. And this is strictly a mathematical equation. We total up all the assessed values to these properties. Divide them by the number of properties, and this is where this number comes from, the two fifty-seven. Now, the tax impact on the average home, tax rate increases by two point five one percent. And that represents an increase of sixty-one dollars on and forty-four cents compared to two thousand and twenty. Now, if we include the recommended additions to the base. The increase becomes seventy dollars and eighty cents or two point eight nine percent. This can be reduced to approximately seventy dollars or two point eight five percent. If we take into account the proposed mitigation to the levy increases that were recently discussed. And however, for the most part, people. People will have their 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 taxes increased based on two point one five percent. There's never any guarantee. The amount of the increase or decrease really depends on the changes to the assessment on your property, which of course this year has been fairly minor. I wanted to draw council's attention to the two thousand and twenty surplus. According to the preliminary budget, the surplus is three million dollars. Now, we just want to caution you that all of these numbers are preliminary and subject to adjustment. We continue to make entries on a daily basis. This budget still includes the surplus that was generated by the library and the police department, which gets allocated to these boards. And once that's happened, the surplus is reduced to approximately two point seven million dollars. We are still finalizing the safe restart funding we received from the province to offset our COVID-related costs, particularly in transit. We want to be sure that the amount that we're including in this year's in the two thousand and twenty actuals is accurate. And that some of that money should not be deferred until two thousand and twenty one. In the case there is a deferral is required, then that will reduce the surplus accordingly. And finally, the recommendations for how this surplus should be allocated will be coming to council in a separate report in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? Well, we all have lots of detail to go over. Many pages, many lines. Thank you very much for that overview. And again, a reminder, the meetings that are taking place next week on Tuesday and Thursday. And you can find details in regards to that. So that you can participate by watching those of the department heads. You'll find that on the city website. So we'll continue to move along. No resolution is required on that presentation. So next item to deal with is our engineering department. We have street naming for the Patullo Ridge Business Park. And we'll go with Counselor Schadenberg.
I make a motion that Woodstock City Council name Street A and the Patullo Ridge Business Park as Allie.
Thank you, a seconder. Counselor Lauder, discussion. Counselor Schadenberg.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that to sort of say, as of in recent times, we've named some of these major streets in subdivisions or areas after the original farmers that worked these properties, they would all in Griffin and and other names along those lines. So I thought Ali'd be important because they were the owners of that of that property. And that's that's the main street coming off of Patullo. But they say there won't be any side streets to be named in the future, which is always a possibility, of course.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's unanimous. Next, we have the Clark Street at Dundas Traffic Signal Replacement. Counselor Talbot, and looking for a seconder. Counselor Tate, go ahead, Counselor Talbot.
I've got Woodstock City Council award the tender for the Clark Street at Dundas Street Traffic Signal Replacement to Dufferman Construction Company in the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents inclusive of H S T, and the amount over the approved budget be financed by funds in the reserve for capital projects.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's unanimous. And next up, we have street naming for the Woodstock Trail subdivision. Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. That's that streets A and B be named as per council's direction. And now Woodstock City Council name the streets in Woodstock, the trail subdivision as Street A Edinburgh and Street B Leslie Street.
Thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Tate, discussion? Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. To me, this is a sort of a no-brainer and and Leslie isn't really entirely on our list. But Edinburgh is is already a street that's owed in the trail subdivision. And this will be an extension of Edinburgh Street, which reflects back to our Scottish heritage in the community. Which certainly I take pride in saying I'm Scottish, either by by blood or by intake. Or previous intake. Leslie is a reflection of some of our citizens in this community, in particular Jim and Dorothy Leslie. Who have been huge community contributors to this community, supporting our parks and recreation. They're industrialists, retired now. Successful industrialists within our community. And I think it's time to recognize them currently, while they're still here, to see that sign go up in the street. That's my position on it.
Thank you, Counselor Tate.
Yes, fully support the motion. I just had a little background too on Mr. Leslie. He was a Timberland employee for forty-four years, started as a machinist and worked up to be a partner with Walter Booth. He was on our hospital board for twelve years, and he was on the apprenticeship board for a number of years. His sons also have a, the ones retired, but his son has another very successful business in town. Fantastic family, big contributors to the community, and I couldn't think of a better way to honor them.
Thank you. And further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's unanimously. And next on the agenda, we have the tender for the transit van. Looking for a mover and a seconder, Counselor Lauder and a seconder counselor. We'll go Counselor Acioni. Thank you, Counselor Lauder.
That City Council award the tender for the purchase of one transit van from Move Mobility Inc. And that the additional funds be financed from the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's unanimous. And then we have the Oxford County two thousand and twenty-one Development Charges Study Update. And we have a report here from staff with some areas where they're looking at the estimates and what the impact might be on the charges that we should communicate with the county. So Counselor Acioni. And a seconder, Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, your honor. Woodstock City Council endorses the recommendations regarding the County of Oxford two thousand and twenty-one Development Charges Update Study as outlined in the report and direct staff to submit these comments to the county as part of the public comment period.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those, oh, Counselor Fraser, or was that ready for the vote?
No, actually, I I'd just like to comment, quick comment. Number one, I'd like to comment on the fact that another excellent staff report. And that what they've put together makes total sense. And I think, you know, we're recommendations to bring some of this information to county is more than or let me put it this way. I hope the county listens to this and because it makes perfect sense of what they put together.
Thank you. And if given favorable consideration from Woodstock Council, I would hope that the county would take this into consideration in the study. This is definitely something where over the past six years, I have continued to point out some of the areas in their estimates and studies and how one translates into the next report and the next report. And then into our water rates and so on and so forth. And that they have continued to undervalue and not fully take into account the large growth that the city of Woodstock has been having. And so quite a few projects that they need to sharpen their pencils on. And so here's hoping we have a positive endorsement from the city and that the county gives it due consideration. Oh, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's unanimous. We have one more. This is our community improvement plan. It's been a very successful plan in our downtown. We have had over fifteen million dollars of investment over the years in forms of grants and loans. And of course, those limits have remained the same for quite a while. So this is a bit of an update. So looking for a motion on the revision to our C I P grant. Counselor Lauder and a seconder, Counselor Acioni.
I'm moved that Woodstock City Council approve every revision to the program guidelines associated with the Woodstock Community Improvement Plans Tax Grant Back Program will include a cap to the maximum annual rebate of twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you. And discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's unanimous. And now we have the bylaws and of course the one for Griffin Way will not be included. So we'll go with Counselor Tate and seconded by Counselor Lauder. Thank you. Oh, sorry, your microphone, counselor.
Let the following bylaws be given a first and second reading, three four three nine dash two one. A bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eight six two six six dash ten is amended Z N eight dash twenty dash twenty-four three oh five Robinson.
Thank you. And discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's, Counselor Tate.
I'll move by myself, seconded by Counselor Lauder, that the following bylaw be given a third and final reading, nine four three nine dash two one.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And Kerry's. And today for comments and addresses, we'll start with Counselor Fraser.
Thank you, worship. And my only comment is is that once again, you you see the our community come together and support things. The Saturday is the coldest night of the year fundraising walk for to to help with our our community support agencies. And amazing that, you know, they've initially set their their goal at twenty thousand dollars. Then thirty thousand dollars, then forty thousand dollars. And now my understanding, they've either reached or both to reach sixty thousand dollars of donated funding in this community. Which just once again shows how caring our community is and reflects the type of citizens that we have. And I applaud everyone who's contributed to that or even thought about contributing. And unfortunately, I won't go out and walk in this cold weather with them this year, maybe next year. Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think we had, we had quite a few people in the friendly city say that Chili Charlie's prognostication was wrong when they heard what Wyerton Willie and Ponks Tony Phil's was. But I think Chili Charlie is proving to be right. We've had quite a deep freeze, so I don't blame you. Stay warm at home. But I know you'll be thinking of all those people that are out there walking and raising the money. Thank you, Counselor Fraser. Next up, we'll go with Counselor Schadenberg.
Not to back up too far, your worship, but I noticed in in the engineering department, why it said that the street name would be Allie for Patullo Ridge. I'm not so sure if I was supposed to add a suffix to that or not, Allie Street or Allie Avenue or Allie whatever. But there's maybe a point of motion if I was supposed to do that. I'm asking, I guess, at this point, maybe to our to our city clerk before I go forward with one comment.
Yes, your worship, if I could, thank you, Counselor Schadberg. I had sent him a note. I wasn't sure if there was a technical difficulty and I didn't hear the prefix. Or if it was missed. So if we did miss the prefix, even if it's unanimous consent by council, we should circle back to that just so the engineering department and the clerks department can confirm that as they start to put those subdivision agreements together. Thank you.
All right, then we'll we'll go right to that. So who was our seconder on that one? We had, that one was moved by Counselor Schadenberg and seconded by. Well, we'll come up with a new seconder. Oh, sorry. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Schadenberg.
Yeah, sure. The Woodstock City Council name Street A in the Patullo Ridge Business Park as Allie Street.
Okay, thank you. And a seconder, Counselor Acioni, and all those in favor? And Kerry's. And thank you for that point of clarification. And now we'll move on with your closing comments. Thank you.
Yeah, you mentioned that a lot of fun things, a lot of great things going within this community. And and I think not that everyone should be jumping onto social media like Facebook. In fact, you don't even have to post your birthday on Facebook, but there's something fun that's been going on recently in a on a page called, You Know You Grew Up in Woodstock When. For example, Phil Dunbar is well-known for for having a hot air balloon business, has been posting many aerial photos from back to the nineteen eighties and beyond on his site through the same, If You Knew You Grew Up in Woodstock When. A lot of great class pictures from high school and grade school, a lot of wonderful local newspaper clippings of of stuff in the of stuff in the, in the past and saw a great story that was talking about Phil Poole and Joe Pember and stuff like that. That were just posted in the last couple of years. You see some really terrific local history. Like I say, just go on social media, join the group because anybody would take you and then go through, through history, history of time in the city of Woodstock and, and learn something. It doesn't matter if you've been here for fifty years like me, myself, or if you've been here for five months, you can learn some history of Woodstock. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And let's see, we'll go Counselor Talbot.
Thank you, worship. I was going to mention about the coldest night, but since Counselor Fraser has, I'll pass. And my only other comment is stay healthy and stay safe.
Thank you. Counselor Acioni?
Thank you, your worship. Big congratulations to the organizers, of course, of the coldest night of the year. Like when you hear that kind of money raised during the pandemic and to the public, just a huge thank you for your generositys. Speaking of generositys, continue supporting local businesses. Again, I've said this many times, they need us the most right now. As parents, we've always gone to them looking for fundraisers, everything else. Well, the businesses need our support right now. So just keep that in mind. Try to keep dollars spending here in town as much as possible. Keep our small businesses, our restaurants are everywhere from yoga to, to everywhere. Just try to, try to spend as much as you can here in town. It's what I encourage you. And with COVID, of course, it looks like things are going to ease up restrictions-wise a little bit. I still caution you to be safe. Please still wear a mask, stay, stay protected, keep your space. But again, trying to support as best you can. So that's all for now. Thanks, everybody, and stay warm.
Thank you. And Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just kind of on the same theme as the community coming together with this big snowstorm. Please help out your neighbors. I know when the snowplows go by, it fills in the driveways and it's very difficult for people. And I've had a couple of complaints about the snowplows going on, especially when we get a heavy snowfall. If I could just have the director of Public Works just comment on once again, I know, we all know that the snowplows can't lift up their blades. But if you just comment again for the public about the snow removal. Thank you.
Sure. Through your worship to Counselor Tate. Yeah, anytime we get a larger snowfall, we get many residents calling in voicing their frustrations of the wall of snow that we put at the end of the driveway. And their frustrations are understandable, but unfortunately, it's, it's unavoidable. The, for the Public Works Department to provide the service of clearing each driveway would be very costly. As well as our equipment is not fabricated to make accommodations for driveways. The equipment that we have purchased is used commonly throughout Canada. A good supplier that we have. And the frustrations we hear from our peers is the same that are felt through the city of Woodstock. Our operators are trained annually to help ensure they keep up their skills and experience to try to minimize any impacts that we do have. I'll do one shout out to the Snow Buddies Program that we have put out. If there is anybody who does have physical limitations is a, a good program. Maybe not for this year, but for the next year for, for you to consider. And that's done through the Community Services Department. And I guess lastly, we just ask residents for their patience and understanding, especially during heavy snowstorms.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Tate?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to thank the director for that. I know it's really difficult. I know I had to go out and help my neighbor across the street the other day. And he was really frustrated, but there's not much we can do. And other than that, I know it's snowy, that everything's opened up now. And I'm hoping that sooner or later, we get completely opened up, but I know people are getting frustrated. So reach out to whoever you know, just to keep safe. Thanks.
Thank you. And Counselor Lauder?
Thank you. I've just done the reopening. The library is planning their reopening on February the twenty-fourth at ten AM with limited occupancy. And so just have patience and, but they'll be glad to see the people and not have to go to the curb. And the art gallery, they're planning on opening on the twenty-third of February with reduced hours, Tuesday to Friday, eleven to four. And the staff and I want to thank Toyota for supporting the Family Day Grab Bag giveaway. It was a huge success. They didn't have near enough bags, they found out, but it was great for the, the families that were able to pick up the bags and, and the children enjoyed the long weekend with the the things that were in those bags. And the new logo design for the art gallery is up for voting. There's three there. One of them, one of the people is from Woodstock, the Oxford County area that has designed a logo. So check out the website and place your vote. And it'll be all tallied and later this year, they'll be making an announcement as to who the winner is. And thank you and keep safe.
Well, thank you. And again, just a reminder for the viewers at home, the two special revenue fund budget meetings, they take place Tuesday, February twenty-third and Thursday, February twenty-fifth at IPM. You'll find links and agendas. And where you'll have our other presentations taking place at our first regular meeting in March. And in the meantime, again, stay warm and stay safe and be thankful to be a part of such a friendly city. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Fraser, seconded by Counselor Schadenberg, all those in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.